More City Council Work Session. We have four items on the agenda tonight. One of them is going to be removed. The KCPN L Streetlight Purchase will be removed. Mr. Feuerborn couldn't be here tonight. He's ill. He sends his regrets. But we will have three items on the agenda tonight. Joint Meeting with the Park Board and talk about the Activity Center. Joint Meeting with the Arts Commission. And Vehicle Sales Tax and Use Tax. So, beginning with the first item, Joint Meeting of the Park Board and Activity Center.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have SFS Architecture with us to go over the preliminary drawings for the Activity Center at Rec Park. So, I'll go ahead and turn this over to them.
If you remember, at our last meeting, we presented three alternative site concepts, and it seemed like there was pretty good consensus on the Option A. There were several comments, and we've gone back and addressed those comments, and that's what we'll be presenting tonight. We have basically two concepts that we're going to be presenting. One is a base concept, and then there's that would fit with your budget. And then, there's an additional, we're calling an enhanced concept, that has some added features and a little bit additional area. So, just to refresh everybody's memory, the program that we're looking at is mainly a multi-purpose space that would accommodate a high school gymnasium-sized court. It would have spectator seating and be very flexible and multi-use for different types of functions. Also, a walking jogging track. And then, we have support space. That's the restroom, storage space, warming kitchen, those kinds of spaces. And then, parking for approximately seventy-five people, seventy-five cars. So, at the last meeting, we heard kind of five themes from everybody. We heard that we really wanted to try to minimize impact to the adjacent residential neighborhood to the north. We wanted to maximize and really create some good visibility to the facility from the street. We also wanted to take advantage of the pond that's here, and really create some nice views to the pond from the facility. We wanted to really look at the traffic flow and make sure that we had good ingress and egress out of the new facility. And then, as I mentioned, creating that seventy-five parking spaces. So, that's what we've really addressed in this next concept. So, Madison Street is here on the west. If you remember, previously, our facility is a little bit further to the north, and there was some concern about it being too close to the neighborhood. Also, the parking was kind of wrapped around the building. And so, what we've looked at is locating the building here so that it does take really good advantage and good views to the lake. We pulled the parking over to the east side of the building so that we do create a nice drop-off for the entry area. But we also screen the parking from the street, as well as isolate it more from the residential area to the north. As far as maximizing views, we do have kind of our support spaces, our lobby space, an entry, kind of an entry plaza here that would all have good views to the lake. And then, we're also looking at creating an actual, would give us an opportunity to create an actual connection down to the lake if that was desired. As far as site circulation goes, we're trying to really minimize the amount of parking, or I'm sorry, amount of drive that we build. And so, we thought it was really a good idea to try to utilize this existing entrance. This is a really nice entrance to the park, and so utilizing that entrance to get access to the building. And then, we can also create, there's an option to allow us to create this connection to the existing drive here so that we would have two ways in and out of the facility. And then, also, this creates a pretty good isolated drive to the security, for the maintenance facility, for security, and to try to avoid mixing the maintenance traffic with the normal traffic that's using the new facility. So, getting into the floor plan, as I mentioned, this is actually, the entry lobby is here. North is actually to the right here. The main purpose of the facility is to create this multi-purpose space. So, we have the multi-purpose space surrounded by a track, and then, our support space is located off the entry area. Here are just some images of different configurations that this area could be set up in. Could be tables, could be seating. Again, just trying to keep that as flexible as possible. The track is the other function, so we're maintaining a safety zone around the gymnasium space and then creating a track area. This track would be, this track area could be used for the seating area as well. And so, we've looked at, I know the last time, there was a question about tip and rolls versus bleachers that are built-in, telescoping. And in doing some analysis on that, we feel like the telescoping bleachers are going to be more economical when you consider the storage space that you'd need to build for the tip and rolls. So, if you want to be able to move the tip and rolls out of the space and store them, then I think that the telescoping bleachers are going to be more cost-effective. Then, the gym space, this shows a high school-sized court. It could also be set up for two cross-court volleyball courts. And then, just some of the images, this is an image taken from right off the front entry of that, the circle, the existing roundabout, that main entry into the park, looking to the north and east. You can see the entry area here and the support space here, a little bit lower form. The big, larger form is the multi-purpose space. This is from the parking lot, looking down towards the front entry of the building. A little bit more glass and a little bit more presence at the front entry. And this is kind of looking to the south and west. And then, this is a view from the park, looking up towards the north. The pond is to the west here. There's an existing little footbridge that's here, if you recall. And so, you can see the front entry again here. The parking would be over here to the right in the image. And then, we do have some interior shots. This is kind of set up as an activity space when we're using the track and using the court. The spectator seating could be located here on the track. And then, it is set up so that it could be used for that multi-purpose function as well. Basketball goals could swing out of the way and set up in multiple different ways. So, that was the base concept. Are there any questions about that so far? So, then, moving into the enhanced version, it's a little bit, it's really the same site plan. The building itself is just a little bit larger. You can see what we've done now is created more of a sunken area for the multi-purpose space, so it creates some separation between the track and the multi-purpose space and court space. And we'll see some images of that a little bit later on. So, this is sunken down, and then, we would have some ramps that would bring, you could bring ramps for access, for handicap access, and for equipment storage to take things up and out. This recessed area could also be built-in steps or bleachers. It could also serve as a stage area here, so you'd have an elevated stage. There's some real advantages to doing that, but in doing that, in creating that ramp space and the, kind of the separation between the track and the court space, we have to add a little bit of area to the building. So, it actually grows a little bit. Again, the track space would be isolated from the multi-purpose space. Court space could have seating along here, either built-in seating or telescoping bleachers. And again, the cross-court volleyball courts. The images are fairly similar, although you'll notice that there's a little bit more glass along the west side of the building. And then, also, the entry has a little bit more presence, a little bit more height to Again, the view from the parking lot. Again, just a little bit more glass area around the building. This is the interior, and this shows that kind of recessed multi-purpose space. And you can see the seating could be built-in here, or it could actually be telescoping that would telescope under the track area, the ramps that take you down to the court. And you can just see there's a lot more openness and more glass, more visibility out to the And then, set up as more of a multi-purpose event space. So, that are the two, are the two concepts. It's really the same concept. One is just an enhanced version of the base concept. Open up for any questions or comments.
Carrie, on the enhanced version with the sunken-in track, do you foresee us having to put a railing around the whole thing? When I was looking at that last picture, I'm looking at, on the left side, we have runners running right up next to where the bleachers are. Somebody accidentally moves too far to the right or left, they go on to, run onto the bleachers and fall. With the, are you, I'm, we're always paying attention to liability issues.
Right.
But I see some on the right side of the photo. So, was that intended to have kind of a separation bar or something?
Yeah, I think where we were showing more of steps coming down, then we were leaving that more open. And that was the same along here. Where it's, there aren't steps, we would anticipating having some kind of a guardrail. But we need to look at that and just make sure that we have enough space there that if someone is running along here, we don't have an issue with that. I think it's a good point and something we'd have to study further, just to, you know, it could be that there's some stanchion, something fairly minimal, you know, almost a bollard and rope kind of setup that could be movable if it's needed, you know, move out of the way at times. So, but yeah, I think that's a good point, that's something we'd have to study.
To dovetail on that, those bleachers there on the left-hand side of the street, on the left side of the picture there were, exactly. Those there, telescope back in underneath the track, is that what you're saying?
Could be that, or it actually could just be almost like steps that are built-in, cast in place, cast, you know, concrete or cast bleachers. But yes, it could be either one, really. It could be telescoping, and that would open that up even more. When you're not using the bleachers, you'd have even more floor space. So, I think there's options either way.
Thank you.
Any idea what the support spaces are going to be like, what they're going to serve, I mean, what's going to be in there? Do you know?
In the support space?
Do you know what they're going to be used for yet?
The support space would be the restrooms. We definitely have to have some storage space. We're looking at a more of a classroom, that could be multi-use classroom for all types of functions. And then, a small warming kitchen that would serve the event space. Those are the main spaces that we'd see in that support area.
What's the total square footage? What sort of dimensions of this?
The total square footage on the base option is just shy of fifteen thousand square feet. And then, the upgraded option is right around twenty thousand square feet, just a little over twenty thousand square feet.
Thank you, sir. Do you have a cost estimate difference between the two? By the way, I like, really like what you've done here. My kudos on the work, and I, of course, like the enhanced version a little better.
Yeah.
Curious as to what the change is in the price tag.
Right. We're looking at a right around 1.4 million premium for the enhanced version on top of the base scheme, yes. So, it's a fairly significant jump. You know, there could be incremental steps within that 1.4, you know, because there's exterior enhancements in the building. The building is bigger itself. We have the added cost of recessing the event space floor. So, just depends on which of those functions you'd want to select, which would determine that cost, yeah.
I'm curious of how wide that court is, and could we, or would we like to add two basketball courts to go sideways? If we, if we need to practice with two teams, obviously, they wouldn't be full courts, but is that possible? I don't know how wide it would be. And if that's the case, would you have to do it with the base plan with the flatter floor than the enhanced with the sunken floor?
Right. Yes, you could set up the court to have two smaller cross-court basketball courts. They would be fairly small, but the main court is fifty by eighty-four, which is a regulation court, so they'd be fairly, you know, they'd be like half-court courts, basically.
Can you go back to your base picture? I'm just curious how much from the edge of the basketball court you have?
We're showing around about ten feet, is that right, Kwame? From the actual court lines to the track, so.
So, in theory, you would have, it'd be a seventy-foot floor?
Yeah.
Right?
Right. Without, you know, we always like to keep some safety zones around the courts, and so, but yeah, you could increase that, those cross courts beyond, beyond the lines of the full court.
Yeah.
So, you'd actually bring your cross courts out a little bit beyond those lines.
First of all, I love the more enhanced version, of course. But what I love about it, I love that there's more lighting, just natural lighting that comes in with the windows, and that it's just more open. I mean, we're talking parks, and so, we're able to see outside much more clearly. I love how it's unique. It, you know, it steps down into the court and stuff. And I would utilize more of that telescopic-type seating, you know, and be able to push that in, because I would think also that would give you more space than to be able to turn those courts and utilize two there, well, two partials. But I really like it. I think you guys did a great job. It looks great from the outside. I love how it looks from the street, you know, because you see that line of windows. It looks really nice, so.
Thank you.
Yes, I have several things. One thing is the alternative route from the parking lot going north, merging into the maintenance road. That should be, that's definitely a must for an alternate route. But is, was that included in your price on the enhanced version?
In the, yes. It's in the enhanced version.
All right, as part of the estimate.
Correct.
All right. Second is the glass. You've got considerable exposure. I'm assuming that glass can be tinted in some way in order to reduce reflection and light damage.
Yeah.
The heat transfers.
Absolutely, would need to, especially in those gym areas. We don't want a lot of glare, and so, we need to tint those.
Out of curiosity, is there an optional cost factor for brick or solid walls opposed to glass?
Well, believe it or not, the glass is more expensive than the solid walls.
I figured as much.
Yeah.
That's why I'm asking.
Right.
If we went to the windows that were higher up, not so much lower.
Mm-hmm.
Because the floor-to-ceiling windows are going to be a cost factor.
Right.
But we bricked up or walled, concrete up to a certain height, allowed ambient light coming in at a higher point, that would be a reduction in construction cost, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay. All right, then, the only other thing would be on the enhanced version with the submerged section, or your court area, the stanchions that could be placed there would be recessed. I'm assuming that you would have sink points where they can be removed at will.
Correct.
All right.
With a little cover plate to cover that opening up, so.
But we would need to have some way, as Mr. Moorehead said, of separating the track area from that if it's, if it's a depressed area, because even a couple of feet does create a liability issue that I look at.
Yeah.
So, we would have to have a means of putting something in there that's definitely going to act as a barrier. And so, I have to comment on that.
Just a quick question. Can you explain why you feel like that exit, having two exits is so important? I'm just curious.
Yes. Two factors would have to play into it. One is if we widen the entrance into the park, making that four-lane, that could be a cost increase to us. We definitely have to have a left-turn point going into the rec area. You know, we would want to separate that, so you have two lanes and a left turn, so you're already widening that. But the thing is, if you have an overflow, a major event, you have all the parking areas in the park utilized, including that of the rec center. If there's an issue at the roundabout, as far as the bottleneck, you have an alternate way out of that. We're not going to be confined to having to deal with an issue at the roundabout, whether it's a lot of cross-traffic coming north-south, or we have an accident that creates a problem there. We have other ways of getting out of there without having to people wait until something like that clears up. That was my concern there. I don't know, did that help?
I understand now what you're thinking. I don't know, I kind of, that road going into the maintenance facility really isn't wide enough right now for more than one car. So, I would hate for us to look at that as something that people would use often. So, are you thinking more like something that we could open when we have a big event and keep closed most of the time?
Right, it would be gated.
And then?
I would, I would, the purpose of that would be that it would be gated there, so it would discourage utilization of it. Except in those times when we need a major event, you have an exceptional number of cars being parked in that area. So, we do have an alternative means. And we may not even use it then if the flow through the roundabout is sufficient, but if we have, and if we widen the roadway, go four lanes, you know, we could probably handle it. But it's still, I like the idea of an alternate means of getting out of there without having a bottleneck.
Thank you, Mr. Merrill. I think that the second driveway is important in the aspect that it gives access to our staff that needs in and out of the park without having to drive over open ground and destroy what is there. And then, also going clear out to North Madison, then back down through the roundabout. So, that's one of my justifications. The other one is emergency egress and into there also. As far as the roundabout and the bottleneck and that, what I do see is that if that's used for a overflow parking and/or overflow traffic egress out of the park during high events, is that that traffic going out at that north lot would create more of a bottleneck back at the roundabout. That is not a four-entry or a four-exit roundabout. That's basically a three that acts as a two. So, you know, it's, the most of the traffic that I see, and maybe I'm wrong, but the most of the traffic leaving the park, I would suspect would probably go to the north. So, coming out of there, they would just go right to the north. The rest of it, they're only going to go one way, that's to the south. The percentage, I'd be interested to say that, to see that, but I wouldn't speculate. But my own opinion is that most of it would be going to the north and that, using that as a relief with bottleneck, you know, roundabouts are not supposed to bottleneck, you know, and that, quite frankly, I, they do work efficiently as long as they are utilized as they were designed. Now, if we start putting in, you know, egresses out after the fact, then we're contributing to a worse problem than what would have been anyway. So, that's my opinion there, so, and that, I just wanted to add that.
I wanted to say that if we had a special event, which typically is Fourth of July or something else, we already have those roads that we use for the parade that we do open up anyway, where people are parking on the grass and driving out on the grass. I don't know why we would have the extra expense of building that road, and to widen that to four lanes, there's no way we could afford that. There's no way we could afford that. The whole, the whole roundabout would have to be reconstructed as well. You can't have a four-lane park road going into a one-lane roundabout. I would, I would support a gravel road going up to the maintenance, but if it's not going to be used very often, I really don't see us needing to spend that if we're not going to actually access that on a, on a often timeliness. I don't know.
Mr. Merrill? And I appreciate your input. We all differ is that I would not support a gravel road, because we wouldn't support that for any other business or entity, you know, but I totally respect it and see what you're saying, you know, but not, not the full.
Although, they can drive over the grass if they do want to.
I respectfully disagree, but I see your point. I totally see your point. I just, I wouldn't expect us to be able to do something differently that we wouldn't allow businesses or homeowners to do, and a gravel surface to drive on is not one of them, but just my input there.
I actually do like, I mean, I think it can work doing, you know, one-lane roundabout, I see your point. But if you have a left-hand turn lane when you go in there, I understand the expense to, and I'll let you guys figure that out, but the other argument side of it is having a left-hand turn lane to be able to turn into, you know, from the roundabout, then you go in, you decide if you're going to go straight to the park or make a left into the rec area. I think it makes sense, and then, you can use it later to be able, as you exit, to be able to left land, you know, left lane, then you can just have the cops down there to make them go south, and the right lane goes to the north, and you, you know, just first, you know, you could only go, you know, you go the wrong way on the left, but you get them out of there quicker, so.
I have a materials question. I noticed on the images, the surface of the gym and the track seem to be the same material. What's commonly used in a multi-use composite floors? I know they want out.
Yeah, we would be looking at a synthetic floor for both of them. They'd likely look a little different. The track has a little bit different texture to it than the actual gym floor, but they'd both be a synthetic-type floor.
Okay, are there traction issues with those?
No, they're specifically made for tracks, and the synthetic floors are specifically made for basketball and volleyball, and.
Yeah, years ago, a lot of high schools went to composite floors, and racquetball clubs went to composite floors, and they tore them out because injuries were piling up like crazy.
They've gotten a lot better over the last couple of years. There were a lot of problems early on, but they have a lot of same slip coefficient that, as a wood floor would have, gym floor.
My question to that dovetail there is, how compatible are those synthetic floors to the table legs, the chair legs, and such like that?
Yeah, there again, they've created a multi-purpose floor that is specifically for that. Now, you wouldn't want to leave tables and chairs set up for a long time, but they do kind of self-heal and come back, so we haven't seen a lot of issues with that. Again, if you were to leave tables and chairs set up for a long time, you could see some issues with the flooring.
As far as for if the worst-case scenario happens and the floor is snagged or guffed or scuffed to the point where it needs repaired, how specialized equipment does it take, or would we expect that our staff would be able to repair that, or what would we expect to have to do if a chunk was taken out of it by normal wear and tear use of multi-purpose?
Yeah, I would think that, you know, there's a lot of area reps, manufacturers reps of these floors in the area. I would think you would want to have that repaired. I don't think it's something you'd want staff, unless they get. staff, unless they get specially trained to do that. But it wouldn't happen often enough that I would think that you would want to, you know, you would need your staff trained to repair that floor.
Thank you, of course, I like the multi, the bigger version here. But the sunken court here, do we lose, we lose some space, don't we, overall space, when you look across the board? With those, with the way the bleachers are and the steps and, I guess, the handicap ramp here? Aren't we giving up some space?
You're actually growing the building a little bit to, in order to have the same amount of floor space. So yes, you're using.
The enhanced version, but we did one level, how much more space would we gain?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Okay, we go the enhanced, the same floor plan with the enhanced version, but we don't have it sunken, we're one level, do we gain some?
You do, you wouldn't have the ramp space, so there's, you know, five feet of, on each end, so there's, you know, ten feet times the entire width of the building.
Would that be enough to get another basketball team into practice, or is that something, would we gain anything from that?
Those cross-court gyms would just be a little bit bigger, yeah, I think it would help for that type of event, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Curious, obviously this is an ongoing project, and you've already developed two different designs for us, and we know that to build this at this point requires a successful passage of the geo bond on April 5th. What specifically are you looking for, what does SFS need from us tonight? Do you need decision, do you just need input?
Tonight is just an information item for the board. So what are, what will happen after this meeting is, we will establish what image we'll be using in the bond informational campaign. It will likely be the base model, and then as we get further into the process, and if the bond issue is successful, then we'll be able to talk in-depth about the enhancements to the building, and what direction the park board and city council would like to go with the building, and the materials, and the access points, et cetera.
Thank you, so just to clarify, we're seeing both concepts tonight. We will not be making a decision, yea or nay, on either one, they'll still both be viable, depending upon what happens with the geo bond and where the money lands and all that kind of thing. But this is just, here's what we have as possibilities, and then a little bit of guidance towards the educational campaign of the geo bond, correct?
Exactly, this was just to get both options in front of you tonight. Both buildings contain the same essential elements, and so those will be the elements that are talked about in the informational campaign. And then, like I said, the image will be the base image used, and then depending on how it all works out, we can talk about enhancements.
Thank you.
I got one question about the floor. We've talked about this multipurpose floor. What if, what's the cost difference if we went, because some of the pictures that I've seen, I think it was sent in the packet, showed examples of other places, and they had wood floors, and then they just rolled, I assume, a plastic or rubber sheet over it. What's the cost difference between this multipurpose floor we're talking about here and going wood with, and being able to roll that over for special events?
Difficult question, because there's so many different ranges of wood floor, different grades of wood floor. Some of the images that we showed earlier, the synthetic floor actually can look very much like a wood floor. And so you may have been seeing an actual synthetic floor that has a wood grain look to it. And so that may be, some of those images may have had a wood floor. There's a lot of maintenance costs with the wood floor. The first cost, I don't think there's a huge difference, but with the wood floor, you're probably going to be refinishing that floor every five maximum years. And so, and then there's a greater replacement cost on the wood than there is with the synthetic floor, so just a lot more maintenance with the wood floor that you're going to see on an ongoing basis.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
The sunken floor to me is more safe as a jogger, because I go to Prairie Life sometimes for a triathlon class, and we have to go in the gym and do some laps while adults are playing basketball. And I tell you, those basketballs are flying, and you're jumping and dodging. So imagine kids playing, and you're on a flat floor, and there's no separation. So the enhanced floor, if you are a jogger walker and use that, it's nice not having to worry about basketballs flying everywhere.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Any other questions?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, thanks, guys.
Move on to item B, joint meeting with the Arts Commission. Okay. Okay, did we get it all swapped out, okay?
Yes.
Yep.
All right.
So next on the agenda, we have the Arts Commission, who is with us for their first joint meeting with the city council. And I will turn it over to Sharon Paris, the Chair of the Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members, and those in the audience. Really appreciate your time tonight, and we'll make this as efficient as possible, but give everyone the chance to express their opinions. Before we start, I'd just like to introduce the members of our commission that are here tonight. Unfortunately, two of our members had emergency situations and are unable to be here. So I'm going to start with Becky, and let her introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Becky Martin, I'm Ward Four. And actually, I've lived in Raymore since 1985, on and off, and moved back in 2003, and I've been here ever since.
I am the newbie in the group, I have lived here less, just under two years, and I am Ward One.
There we go, I'm also in Ward One, my name is Bob Berry, and this September, we'll have been here for 20 years.
I'm Pat Sutser, and I'm from Ward Four. We bought land in seventy-six and started our orchard, built our house in eighty-seven, but from birth, I got to spend all my summers with my aunt Uncle Adolf Kurzwell Road, so I'm well-versed with Raymore.
I'm Dr. Rayvoklusanovic, I've been in the city of Raymore, I've lived here for nine years now, and I'm serving at large.
Thank you. Why don't we do this, we'll go ahead and kind of review where the commission has gone, where we've been, and where we want to go. And we'll start off with what our charge was originally from the city. As you can see up there, I'm not going to read word for word, but it was to engage our citizens to cultivate a community that has art in addition to sports. We were charged with promoting close cooperation between the city and businesses, residents, institutions, and other agencies to promote the arts. Were charged with facilitating communication between the various arts organizations, art leagues, schools. And finally, our advisory role is to help the city council with long-range planning, the allocations process, and comprehensive and strategic planning. So that was our original charge. And if we could go to the 2015 year review, I feel pretty comfortable that we've gotten our name out there. Our year started off in February, where a couple of the commissioners and Meredith attended the MACA training. And for those of you who don't know what MACA is, that's the Missouri Association of Community Arts and arts agencies. And those of us that went to that two-day seminar, met with other cities and towns to learn about how they handled their arts in their communities, listened to some of the challenges and some of the successes. Then, for the next few months, the commission worked with the city staff to develop bylaws and city code, which was quite a new process for most of us who are volunteers, not having been in the city politics before, so it was very interesting, we learned a lot, and we finally accomplished that. So that the city approved the code and the bylaws, and our first official meeting was in August. During the next few months, we partnered with some of the area schools to help sponsor a couple of things, I'll just review what we did. In November, we sponsored with the art department there, they have an annual event called the Art Invitational Meet, and that's with six different schools. The commission actually gave them sponsorship money, and that money was used to help purchase appreciation gifts for all the art teachers. And we were also in attendance, and our name was in the program. Then, following that, the Arts Commission sponsored, gave sponsorship to the theater department, and had our name listed in the program for the play Much Ado About Nothing. And then, finally, in November, and you all heard this last Monday night, the commission actually helped sponsor a student art contest for the Tri-County Art League, and that was quite successful. Some of the things that were pending at the end of 2015 were sponsorships for the band department. We're actually going to be helping to sponsor the seventh and eighth grade spring concert. And also, we're going to be helping with the parade of choirs for the intermediate schools. We're going to be sponsoring the intermediate schools and actually helping them to buy some things that they need for that particular choir concert. Coming up in 2016, as you know, we are going to be having various artists display their artwork throughout the chamber, that process has started. Applications have gone out to members of the art leagues, also all throughout Cass County. We're sending that to the Pleasant Hill Art League, Belton, Harrisonville, and Peculiar. So we look forward to having quarterly displays of artwork by our local artists, and I think you'll be severely impressed with the amount of ability that this community has. And I think it's going to be a great addition to the chambers here. We're looking forward to our public art project, which is going to take place starting in March through September. I don't want to give too much detail about that, because it has to be formally approved, but I think you'll find it very exciting, and it's a way to bring our community together, the businesses, the residents, and it's going to be really fun. So I don't want to spoil the surprise, but I think it'll be quite fun to do. And finally, June 11th is our Big Summer Scene event. That event will be held at the Historic Farmers Market and the TD, TD, the Hannah Depot. We're going to be having a juried art show, then vendors, arts and crafts, people selling and displaying their artwork, we're going to have musical performers, we're going to have interactive activities for children and families, food vendors, and it's hopefully going to be a great day and a fun event that we hope will be built on each year. And we are going to be inviting all of our surrounding cities to participate, both as artists and performers. So I think overall, our first year has been successful in that we've gotten, you know, people who didn't know what the art commission was before, at least now, know that we exist. The schools know what we're about, some of the community artists know what we're about, and we look forward to working with the city and planning for our future. So during that time, in the fall, we had a, similar to what the city's going through right now, we had a listening session with the community, we had two sessions plus an online survey. And during that period of time, we got feedback from the residents that participated in that listening session. And tonight, we'd like to share some of those results with you, and for that, I'm going to turn it back over to Meredith and Jill.
Great, thank you, I'll go ahead and introduce Jill Groetzinger to the group. Some of you who participated in the listening sessions may have met Jill already. The Arts Commission went out and looked for a facilitator who had experience with the public-private partnership related to the arts, and we were very fortunate to find Jill. Jill works for the Overland Park Arts and Recreation Foundation, which supports the city of Overland Park and some of their arts efforts. And so she is very well-versed in what it means to provide art to the community from the city perspective. And Jill came in, like many of you know, and led a series of conversations, and worked with the Arts Commission to narrow it down to a list of priorities. And ultimately, all of her work has been leading up to making this final presentation to you all tonight. So I will go ahead and turn it over to Jill.
Cool, all right, well, thank you so much for having me here. It's been a pleasure working with your community. Raymore has been awesome, and the motivation and the inspiration for integrating art into your community has been a wonderful process to be engaged in. As Sharon indicated, we did put together a survey that we sent out. We had ninety-four respondents to that survey. And overwhelmingly, seventy-four percent of the respondents are very interested in arts in the community. So that's good news, if you're excited about arts in Raymore. Looking at what the respondents were most interested in, they were clearly most interested in music. Music was a big factor for the arts in Raymore. The visual arts, and then fine arts and theater were also important ideas to bring to Raymore. As Sharon stated, we did have two facilitated public meetings. They were very dynamic in nature, very involved as far as conversation and whatnot. We had one October 14th, where we had twelve different participants, and then another one on the 16th, where we had twenty participants. And some of you were attended, some of you attended those sessions, and they were full of rich dialogue that we were able to decide that some of the top priorities should really be the art in public places, live music, and art festivals. So in addition, taking that information and kind of breaking it down and prioritizing it, we chunked it out into arts activities, programs, and events, and what the community really wanted to see. And that concert series was number one, and that goes back to the survey as well, music, music, music. And what we heard was that a concert series throughout, over time, and at different venues would be very attractive to the residents of Raymore. Enhancing your summer scene, bringing in more dynamic experiences, a variety of different types of activities would be a benefit. Providing hand-on art classes was extremely attractive to your constituents. Looking at all ages, little kids, all the way up to seniors, and finding different ways to provide those for those audiences. Investing in fine arts was also an important thing, whether it be sculpture outside or fine art as far as paintings or whatnot in set locations, but that was seen as a priority. Also, and it seems as if you're already starting to do it, investing in, or I'm sorry, showcasing art exhibitions in city facilities. And so, just finding ways to provide different audiences, different artists, a way to showcase their art to different constituents throughout Raymore. And it was noted that both visual arts and theater was important. So not just, you know, just the pretty art that we can look at, but ways where we could have performing artists, whether it be poetry- And then also, having different public art contests was seen as some activities and events that would be important for the community. One other thing that came up during the process is that we needed to identify where would it make sense for us to have, I use that again, for Raymore to have arts activities. And the farmer's market just came up as like a great place for the community to get together and celebrate the arts. And so that could be either through permanent installations or pragmatic things or different types of events. Memorial Park also came up. The soon-to-be-developed Hawk Bridge Amphitheater was an important and attractive thing for different types of performances. Also engaging local businesses. That came up as an important thing to try and build that sense of community. The new City Hall Annex was also a spot that was identified. And then really capitalizing on the existing spaces that you have. The churches, the schools, those auditoriums, those wonderful places where audiences could engage in the performing arts were also identified as important places. And as I mentioned earlier, the partnerships really came out as something for the city to look into. And it was really, it was identified that keeping it local and really investing in Raymore and making those partnerships exist in Raymore was something that the community saw as an important thing. And then the Parks and Recreation Department came up quite a bit. They have a lot of programming already going on. They have structures put in place that seemed like it really made sense for the arts to partner with them in some capacity and build on that synergy. Of course, the Raymore Festival in the park is a great way to capitalize on the arts. The Tri-County Art League, building those partnerships with the Chamber of Commerce, the business component, if we would look into putting arts into the businesses, having that existing relationship be very beneficial. And then also, looking into the churches, neighborhoods, all the other different community things, just really keeping it grassroots and local. Marketing became a huge issue throughout the discussions because it was identified as an important thing to figure out how we could get the word out to the community. How can we brand what the Arts Commission is doing? You know, how can we give it a face that people can recognize? And then how then also to get it out so that the community can see it, know it, and then get excited about it. And we did some brainstorming on that, and they came up with some really fun ideas on what they really saw the arts in Raymore looking like. And that was that they wanted it to be fun and bright and big and bold, you know, very, very approachable. We didn't want this, you know, idea that it's, you know, this high-level arts thing. But no, it's an approachable arts thing, and it's a very small town. It needed to resonate with the brand of Raymore and be very grassroots. And in addition, we talked about how we could get that word out. And in the survey, email was really, really popular and a big presence, and of course, the web as well. But then also, a dedicated section in the Raymore Review that came out as a great way to communicate what the Arts Commission was trying to achieve in Raymore, as well as maybe some streetlight banners and other very, very visible ways to try and showcase the efforts and promote all of the good work that you guys are going to be doing and are doing right now for that matter. And I think that's all you got for me. But thank you so much for having me, and I've enjoyed working with your community.
Thank you, Jill. So one of the final sections of Jill's report contains some key questions and organizational options to help guide the discussion with the Arts Commission and City Council this evening. And before I turn it back over to Sharon, I want to hit the high points of this slide for you. So essentially, the question that came up from the Arts Commission is, how should the Arts Commission be structured to meet the goals of the City Council? And so, there are kind of three options that came to the top of the list. The first is the volunteer corps. And this would be an active group, a Friends of the Art group, a group that is proactively planning and creating art projects for the community. So a very active group of doers who are creating art in Raymore. The second option is council advisors, and this is much like the Planning and Zoning Commission operates. This would be, a group would be providing policy-level recommendations to the City Council, and it would not be engaged in actually creating art projects in town, but more of an oversight group to the city and providing suggestions to city staff and departments to implement. And then finally, the third option is a combination of the both. It's a policy and a program setup for the Arts Commission, and really looks at kind of providing everything that could be on the table, not only policy recommendations, but actually getting out there and creating art in the community. So you can see on the screen that from Jill's report, there are essentially four levels of questions that have been identified to help the group think about what the structure looks like. Really coming to a clear understanding of what the expectation is of the City Council for the programs or projects or policy that the Arts Commission is doing. The level of decision-making authority that the Arts Commission has. Do projects have to come through the City Council? Does the Arts Commission have the ability to implement projects, assuming it has budget to do so, et cetera? Funding is a big issue to work through. Will the city continue to provide funding for the Arts Commission, or does the Arts Commission need to establish a fundraising arm? And finally, what does the interaction look like with other departments, especially Parks and Recreation? And then you can see some other questions off to the side about, is this still a good fit? Again, this key question about Parks and Recreation. And finally, and this has come up all along, does the Arts Commission need to consider splitting off and becoming an independent nonprofit to best meet its mission and the direction of the city? So with that, I will turn it over to Sharon to lead the conversation.
Well, we open the floor to questions and comments from either the commissioners or the City Council. I just want to say that we couldn't say any of what we've done already without the strong support of the staff. And Meredith and Mike and Meredith have been so wonderful to work with, and we thank you for it. Probably as long as we truly have done what we've done, but not without their help. Well, we also want to thank the support of the City Council for all that we've done thus far. Truly, we have a lot to break out of this in our heads, and without the support of the Council, we're likely to go nowhere in our heads. So I want to thank everybody for that. So you see, you see what we've done in 2015 where we've finally started back to where we were in 2016, and we've done a lot of the fighting going on this year. I did forget to mention that a couple of the commissioners are attending the Arts Kansas City, which is a group of advisors who put on seminars and booths for those people involved in the Arts Committee. So council members are attending workshops specifically applied to the area nonprofits as applied to art shows that have been offered. So I guess where we'd like to start off tonight is just wanting to get input from the commissioners and from the council members in there about whether they believe that we've had success thus far, where they think that we might be going forward, going answering some of the questions out there. And I want to say that we appreciate all that you're going to say, and we really value what you have to say about the field we want to meet in the rough for us and move forward and not move forward too fast, but we're sure that we're going to be able to get there. So I would encourage anybody to ask questions and send out with questions.
Council members, go ahead.
Well, I'm incredibly impressed with the stuff that I saw on the presentation and in our packet. I have to confess that I stole away and I was the little fly on the wall at their last meeting. So I even had kind of a little bit of exposure to this. First of all, I was very impressed with how organized the meeting was itself and how well it was ran, and the interaction with staff. So structurally, I'm very comfortable with that. I love the planned activities. Keeping in mind that you guys have actually only been meeting for seven months, I mean, that's 30 weeks, and look at the things you've already done. And, you know, when I'm at the Pirates of Penzance Play and seeing the Raymore Arts Council being, you know, Commission being referenced, you know, the art that we have here and seeing it in the papers and things like that, and I'm getting calls from Kansas City about, hey, you guys are doing some fun art stuff out there that, so I think the ripple effect is starting to touch other people. I'm very excited about that. I do want to say, and I will not give it away, although my wife wants to know if we can have two submissions in the public art display, that is not just throwing some stuff out there. This is, we do the art and then it gets displayed. So it's actually a lot more interactive than just putting things out. So that's a really fun, exciting project in mind. The key questions, and I had this the other night when I was looking at this, and I've been mauling over this, and I speak only for myself, you know, when this was kind of batted around and we thought about creating this, there was a lot of discussion to keep things very open-ended to allow you guys to kind of develop on your own. And, you know, I said to a friend of mine today, I said, you know, I want to be careful not to talk too much in black and white because I know artists like to play in the gray a lot more than black and white. But for me, you know, I see a lot of similarity with the park board, in the sense that we do offer some financial support to the park board, but yet they do have some autonomy in their money and how they spend it. I think from a funding sources question, I don't want to see the city reduce any of its additional, its support at this point. Now, I'd be hesitant to expand upon that unless justification was presented, and I'd like to see them maybe seek out some additional private support, but I don't want to eliminate that altogether. The expectations of programs, I think, have, you have more than exceeded the bar there. Level decision-making authority, you know, to me, I think that kind of organically has developed, and I think as you guys do more, I see you guys, at some point, when we ask you to plan something, it's instinctive to want to carry it through and not to have to do all the work and then we come and give you the thumbs up or thumbs down. If you guys are running in the right direction, I think you should be allowed to do that and have a small degree of autonomy there. I mean, we are kind of just a general watchdog to some degree with the park board. We don't dictate what programs per se are done there, only if it affects us directly. So I'd like to see some decision-making authority held. I look and see all three options combined. I mean, for me, you know, I'm a numbers guy, so I'll give you a number. I'd like to see 80% operations, 20% policy. Yeah, I mean, you can't implement things and do programs without having some ability to see the efficiencies and values in those and to prioritize those. So, and you're talking to, with no disrespect to my peers, you're talking to nine people who are not inherently artists. So, you know, we are kind of reliant upon you, and you're swimming in that pool. We want you to be able to have some, or I would like to see you have some input on that. But you do have to have some operational control. I mean, if you guys just get up there and say, we're happy to feel like planning and zoning, you know, we have to wait till the developer comes to us. Well, if you guys just sit here, the artists may not come. So we want you to kind of play with that a little bit. Interaction with other departments kind of helps with the other questions. You have to maintain some degree of individuality. No disrespect to Park and Rec Department, but that's, with our current existing program, that's not their strongest point. Now, they do a lot of things that would be complimentary, or I could see dovetailing with the Arts Commission, but not, I don't think you should become a part of that. I've lost my screen, so I can't look at what I want. Okay. Is the Arts Commission still a good fit for the city? You're an amazing fit in the first seven months. Bad question. Take that off the board. The only thing on there that I'm mildly defensive about is that very far-right column, the right corner, and that is, at this point, I foresee the Arts Commission as being just a little too new to be able to suddenly go, hey, we're on our own. And I've, now, I've seen successful autonomous programs, typically a little more mature programs where you have some kind of, you already have so much momentum, it pushes a little at itself. I'm fearful at this point that going out on your own could be somewhat divisive of a mission. So I know I'm talking longer than I expected to, so, but I wanted to, because this was a key slide that I've spent over a week thinking about, and so I'm really excited about what you guys have done. I want to see more. I'm ready to get out and play and get messy and dirty. So are my family. So I'll now relinquish all this to over to the other members.
Thank you. I will just say that from the first time that I went to the MACA two-day event, in talking with some of the other cities and towns, believe me, it took years to get, to be truly successful. And if it's, one thing I learned from that, that meeting with those people is you build on your success. You start out, you have one success at a time, you start, and you make it successful even if it's a small success. So, you know, I feel good that we've done what we've done in seven months, but you're right, you know, we're still young and we need help and guidance from everybody in the community. So I agree that we're not, we're not ready to step out on our own and make full decisions on our own yet. But, you know, we, we're here tonight to get feedback from everybody, so.
And those three questions are going to be coming back to you every few years. We want to know, hey, are we still doing a good job? Are we doing what you're looking for? So you're just, you're going to see it.
Thank you, sir. And I'm going to work a little bit backwards, but starting with the other questions. Is the Arts Commission still a good fit for the city? Unequivocally, yes. I think it's, you've really gotten your name out there. People are recognizing you, the press certainly is, and you're continuing to build on your reputation each time. We want you here. We wouldn't be authorizing you and funding you if we didn't. Should the group become part of Parks and Rec Department? My personal opinion is no, because I think that limits your potential for the future. If it becomes to a point, let's just say, let's say the one we don't think about. Let's say that the Bill Gates Foundation decides to give you $5 million. At that point, you probably want to be a nonprofit and be able to do your own thing. So I think that that personally limits you a little bit. And then do you, under the organizational structure, do you become subservient to the Parks and Rec Board? So I don't think that's a good solution at this time. Should the group consider becoming a separate nonprofit? I think that one is, jury's still out. We don't know yet. Maybe going forward in the future, and I like Bob's comment that these questions will come back. I'm certainly, as far as the three options at the top of the page, I am certainly, at this point in time, leaning more towards the volunteer corps, for the main reason, not that I don't want you involved in policy, I'm fine with that, but we need you in the operation side. We don't have, as Derek said himself, we as a council or even the individual departments of the city, don't have the expertise to carry out a lot of these things, and we need your help with that. Again, I think that this is kind of an evolving situation with the Arts Commission, so we have to take that into consideration. Expectations of programs, I too believe you've done a very good job. I would add, I've mentioned this a number of times, and I would, if I were you, people always ask the question that is brought up in the community conversation, what's next? What's next? You can look around here and say, that's great. And as Janet Jackson said, what have you done for me lately? Please consider a performing arts venue of some type. I think that there is a very strong demand. It was identified in your survey, at least from the music standpoint. I think that's going to be, if you don't hit on that, I think you're going to get that nagging question from the public, when are we going to see that? When are you all going to do that? So that would be my recommendation. I think you've done a very good job there, but I would certainly look, and I realize that you're some, we're all a little bit handcuffed until we see what happens with that geo bond. If that passes, certainly opens up a lot of opportunities for you all, as it does for us and the rest of our citizens. Funding sources, I would agree with Councilmember Morehead. We funded you initially, we raised the amount. But one thing that you want to remember, that we tend to forget, none of us are here permanently. A future council may decide that that's not what they want. I think that it's important enough to the city that you all need to start looking at, you know, we keep the hope that the city sees the importance of this to fund us, but we also need to be able to have different streams of revenue coming in to keep the mission going. Fundraising opportunities, benefactors be what they may. And like I said, I would hope that we would continue to fund you, but again, none of us will be here forever. So you never know what the future's going to bring. And interaction with other departments. And interaction with other departments, I think, is pretty self-explanatory. It's a must. This is not, just as Parks and Rec is not just Parks and Rec or the Board or even us, it's, it's all the city. And the Arts Commission is no different. It's imperative that you have interaction with other departments and that they work with you. We're all working towards the common good and enhancing the life of the citizens of Raymore, just in different areas. So I think that's imperative as well. I think I've pretty much covered the board. Thank you very much for, for being here and bringing this to us tonight.
What we're talking about is the culture for Raymore. We want to be considered a cultured community, and that can take any direction we want it to. When I was a little girl, I remember we had only two hundred, well, less than three hundred people, but we still had a town band and that included a tuba player. So I would like to see us having our own town band. They could play at all sorts of affairs, at the farmer's market or at the mayor's Christmas program or different things like that. But I would like to see, we're talking about art and culture and oil and paints, let's have some in music, too.
Oh, I, I think you're correct there, and I came from an upstate New York town that had a wonderful town band and they performed at all kinds of events and it was a big draw. And whether it's a town band or we bring in musicians to appeal to the younger crowd, music guides the heart. I mean, it, it truly is another factor of art that people don't often think about. Dance is an art. You know, drama, poetry, I mean, there's any number of things that are considered art, not just a painting on the wall. So we've got a lot of, a lot of room to grow.
Speaking of venues and stuff, do you think that you're gonna be able to make enough money to kind of help self-fund from some of these venues?
Well, as far as fun, funding goes, I mean, to be able to get donor dollars to fund some of these items, I think we have to talk about potentially having a nonprofit arm, because right now, as a city, as a function of the Commission being part of the city, we cannot go out and raise money and get donor dollars right now, right into the Commission. We'd either have to run the money through the found, some type of foundation or a nonprofit arm. I mean, certainly, that would be, the idea is to garner dollars from local business people, bigger entities. I mean, we don't expect the taxpayers to fund activities that we want to pursue. I mean, that, that is a goal, but I think we have to figure out how do mechanically, how do we make that happen?
I don't disagree with anybody, what anybody said. I really think you guys took off running. If you look at YouTube, I'm one of the five people that watched your meetings and, no disrespect, I think seven watch our meeting. So, but I was very impressed how organized they were, what you got accomplished. You know, you weren't spinning your wheels, you were getting, you know, projects, you were talking, you were respecting each other, and that was, that was nice to watch. I mean, since you guys just kind of took this and, you know, you're brand new. You started about the same time I did, so very impressed. The community conversation that you had, got to bring my daughter and was a part of that. She's very impressed. You know, one of the things we talked about as a council is how do we retain our young people? And, you know, we want them to grow up, but we'd like for some of them to come back. And that's kind of the challenge I put to the Art Council, you know, how do we make our youngsters and really all of us fall in love with our city? And I think you guys are on the right track to do that. In, in talking about a town band, I did hear a rumor that Councilman Holman does sing, so I, you know, I just kind of throw that out if there's, you guys are putting, and Ms. Hubach, do you play an instrument or, do you play an instrument? Do you have an instrument you play? So here, we got two, so we can.
I'll play a needle sing.
Okay, there we go. But I have been very impressed, so I want to really be serious about that. I've been watching your meetings and you guys have done a great job. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just say a few things. I agree with most of what's been said, starting, starting at the top of the slide, since everybody kind of started in a different place. My vision of you guys, especially right now, is the full service with the option three. I feel like, like Jay said, we need that volunteer group, but we also, we don't have policy. You know, like Derek said, we left it wide open for you guys to kind of pave the way on your own, and so part of that will be giving us that guidance and suggestions as far as policy goes. So we need, we need both parts of that, I feel like, right now. I think it would be hard for you just to be the policy group because we don't have an, an arts staff. You know, we don't have anybody on our city staff that would, that you would guide necessarily to do that, kind of like we have with Parks and Rec. And, you know, you kind of could fall under Parks and Rec, but we already have a board for them, and I feel like our Parks Department is spread pretty thin as it is, that they're not really in the position to take on more work. You know, they do have some art stuff that they do, some of their programming, and we would love to expand that. So while, you know, you can't take over that department, we definitely hope you'll work with them. So I feel like really, really, we need you to be option three. We need you to be full service at this point. I feel like, you know, kudos to you guys. You have amazed us with the way you've started, so pretty soon we may grow. We may need more arts staff. We may, you know, we may need that five of, whatever it is, fundraising arm, you know? And I think that the progress you guys are making just proves that and maybe will speed up kind of what I envisioned as the process to be, because you guys have absolutely hit the ground at a full-speed sprint, and I think it's incredible. Let's see, I took some notes as everybody else was talking. I love the community, community theater, community music groups, vocal and instrumental. I think that, I know that's something that a previous council member talked about as we got this Commission off the ground. And so I think there definitely is interest in that partnering with businesses. That was one of the things that was on the plan that you guys had, and I think that's great. Over and over and over, as a city, we, we make our goals to partner with businesses. The more we can do to give our local businesses more business, you know, the better off we all are gonna be in the long run. So I think that that's a great idea, finding ways that we can work with them to bring art into their doors, to bring more customers through their doors, would be a great plan. And I don't, this just popped into my head when we were talking about the fundraising. I know Parks and Rec does fundraising through like sponsorships for their programs. I don't know if that would be something, if you guys are planning something, then you get businesses or people to sponsor those programs, and I'm sure you've already looked into it, but just.
We actually, for Summer Scene, have a sponsorship package that we put out, and so we will be looking to get sponsors to help with Summer Scene, whether it's to help provide prize money for the juried art show or it's to pay for some of the performing artists. We, we are definitely using sponsorship opportunities for that particular venue.
Go ahead. If I can just add to that, the other component that I think Sharon is referring to is how do we, how do we create a process where individuals can make tax-deductible donations to the organization? So it's easy for us to get business sponsorships, but looking at creating a foundation or some additional mechanism to make it easier for individuals to donate is a component that needs to be explored. That makes sense. And kind of that last question, should you become a separate nonprofit group? And I totally agree with what the previous council members have said. I, I feel like eventually we may need to explore that, but I don't see, I guess I don't see you guys morphing into that, maybe adding that behind you, but not changing this Commission to be something separate from the city. I think it is important that, that we maybe end up with both, but not just one or the other. And finally, I just wanted to tell Derek that I think really artists play in color, not gray. If, if I could add. So for twenty years now, we've been a foundation, and we work closely with the Parks and Recreation Foundation, and we have a public-private agreement with the city of Overland Park. And we support, support the arts as well as our arboretum and the Deanna Rose Children's Farmstead. So as a foundation, we do what the city wants us to do, but then all of our efforts are to support the cultural and recreational amenities within the city. And so it is something that started over time slowly, and it's been twenty years now, but we're a pretty significant vehicle for raising money to support the city and build our cultural amenities.
I did have one thing I wanted to add. We talked a little bit about the, the difference between policy and operations. While I certainly want you heavily involved in operations, there are only so many of you and you have so much of a budget. I would see you doing, and we talked about, community theater, for example, creating a subordinate organization to you. Creating community theaters, it's a separate organization but reporting to you, calling for volunteers. I mean, we had a huge number of you all that were, we had to select people for this board. There were people that were, were turned away. So I don't think you would have problems in developing that kind of a group and, okay, we're, as you were developed, they would be developed below you and say, okay, our expectations would be, you know, two performances a year, hopefully at the new Hawkeridge Amphitheater and, you know, people from the community and that kind of thing. You bring to us what presentations you'd want to do and we'd help with the support side, perhaps funding and manpower and that kind of stuff.
I would agree. We, we've already, one of our commissioners has proposed possibly setting up a separate group to help develop music programs. So again, is, I think, you know, the idea that we're out there, people are recognizing that we are a valid organization, and the more that we've talked to the schools, the teachers, the different art and music departments, the network of those volunteers is growing. So I think that certainly is something that we would rely on, because we are only seven people. And we've got lives, as you all do, outside of this place, so we have, we would have to rely, and that's the way to get the community involved. We want people to volunteer. We want people's ideas to be put forth and to be implemented. So that's the way this community grows and that's the way we interact. And that's, as you heard in our city meetings, connectivity is the key thing. So yes, we will be doing that.
First I'll say, so therefore I will infer that Ms. Hubach will be donate, be the chair of the band, based on her earlier comments, but, there we go. I, I'd like to do something for a second that just I don't normally see done when we have these joint meetings. You know, a lot of times the council ends up getting up and that we give our input and, and believe me, we like to talk, so we love to share our thoughts. But actually, I'd like to turn the tables a minute and ask each of the commissioners, based on the comments that you have received from us so far, do you have any thoughts, questions or input that you would like to give? I mean, like I said, we love to hear ourselves talk, but we'd love to hear you guys talk.
Got put on the spot there. I don't know, I mean, I feel like I'm hearing very similar themes from all the council members of, you know, we still have a lot of room to grow, and I, I completely agree with that. I come from a nonprofit world, and so the idea of becoming a nonprofit and adding staff and having to go out and raise funds and not have the support of the city makes me very nervous, because I just know how hard of a process that is. And I feel like we are still very amoeba stage and need to grow our legs a little bit more before we can really consider that as an option, but I do think it is an option for us in the future. I also love the idea of having, you know, separate groups underneath or within to help direct and initiate ideas and programs, because we are not a huge group of people with a, with an exorbitant amount of time to implement every single program we've talked about, and there have been tons of ideas thrown around. And that's one of the great things about, I think, an art commission, is that the ideas are limitless and so, and having wonderful creative people on the commission and the staff support that we've had has really just been amazing for us and, and has opened up all kinds of possibilities. So now it's just, what can we really feasibly do and do well? We, I always talk in my, in my work environment that we can experiment with programs, but every single one of them has to be successful. So making sure that when we go out into the community, we are hitting the mark one hundred percent. And so I think it's really important that we don't overstep or overreach until we're ready to really do that, so that's my thought.
Yeah, I think she summed it up really well. I don't really need to add anything to that. Thank you.
I'm not an artist, I'm a musician. So I've been involved with town bands and choirs for a while, on the board of Community Band in Warrensburg for over twenty years. It would be quicker, easier, cheaper to put together a community choir for a special event, but the people you need won't volunteer their time. You'll have to pay for an accompaniment center director. You can probably borrow the music from schools. Town bands, I know the town bands you were talking about, I've seen some of the pictures of those, Charlene. I had an uncle who played bass drum in one and an alto horn in another, which was a little surprising to our family to see them in those pictures. But the town bands, community bands, the ones that work are, are either funded in a close association with a school, so that they have a place to rehearse and some of the bigger equipment and a library of music and usually a director. Again, they don't do it for free, it's pretty cheap by the going rate, but it, but there is some cost involved. Or with a church, I'm part of the Kansas City Wind Symphony, been with them now for fourteen, fifteen years, I'm associate conductor there, and they're paid for largely by Village Presbyterian Church. We also went out and found private donors and took ourselves to Carnegie Hall a few years ago and performed there, and we've done Kaufman a few times by finding funds within the community. That can be done, too, that, but it takes a long time to get to that level. However, we've got a one-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday coming up and we could start to, to experiment with some special event things and see where the interest is and what our instrumentation is. That's why it's easier to do choirs, but, because you need that tuba player and you need some of the other folks. Also, in, in all of the community groups that I know that run bands or orchestras, we have people that aren't from the community, but they come in and play to help fill out, because you just won't have all the things that, that you need and there's people in the business that'll do that, and they generally do that free. They'll come in for the performance, but not all the rehearsals. So we could probably find something like that. I did bring a proposal to the Commission at the last meeting to see if we could get a consensus on whether we should try to start a community group to start a Raymore Music Series. And I modeled it off of three, a combination of three successful groups that have been around for a while. And, and they would be, get some startup money, some help, mostly organizational things to find people and get things in place from the Commission, but then get them onto their feet, so that they could do things, bring in different sorts of venues and use the existing places, churches and things, but also do one main event, but start with the small stuff, like every, all of these music groups start with small stuff. But those things are doable, we just need to find the people and find the time and, and get them plugged in. I think it's very doable. I think it's, I think we might get some good interest. And then once we do some things, somebody sees the performance or hears about it or talks to somebody who's involved in that, we'll get even more. So we're, we're all thinking about it, okay?
Well, I'd like to say how much I appreciate the fact that we have this opportunity. I think all of us on the council have really enjoyed this last year. Thrilled to know that we're actually meeting your expectations. You've been possibly exceeding them. I think we have a lot planned for the next year, and I think that with the support of the community, and it seems like from all the conversations we've had, we have quite a lot of support, we will be able to continue to drive some of that change. I think the thought of making sure that we keep young people in this community and actually help grow that base is important to all of us because a lot of what we've talked about is making sure that we've thought through what should happen from all different generations. But really wanting to see the city start expanding some of their offerings. So it was great to be able to sit here and see the plans that you guys are making for some sort of facility that would give us more options, because that was the only thing that was kind of a hindrance, is not having spaces. So the fact that you guys are developing spaces really helps play in with what we're trying to do as well. So I think it's a great partnership, and I'm thrilled that you guys are still supporting what we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to Item C, Vehicle Sales Tax and Use Tax. I'm gonna toss this over to you. I understand you're the expert.
I am the expert, apparently.
All right.
Could we take just a two or three-minute bathroom break here?
Three-minute bathroom break.
Intermission, in light of the arts. It's an intermission.
I'll go ahead and jump into my presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Meredith.
So as you all may recall, we presented some information about the use tax. And, yeah, oh, sorry. So I presented information to you all about the use tax and out-of-state vehicle sales tax ballot questions to you last fall. And with the potential election deadlines approaching, it's time for us to revisit the issue and get some direction on how you'd like us to move forward. So tonight, I want to primarily address the out-of-state vehicle sales tax question, and then I will get to the use tax a little bit later in my presentation. So if you recall from our last conversation, the recent state legislation that passed required that cities without a use tax, such as Raymore, must receive voter approval by November 2016 to continue sales tax collection on purchases of out-of-state motor vehicles, trailers, boats, and outboard motors. It's important to know that collecting sales tax on these specific out-of-state purchases is not a new tax. The city is currently collecting this revenue if they are purchased out of state to the tune of about $75,000 a year. With the recent legislation, if the question is not placed on the ballot and/or the tax is discontinued by the voters, the city would stop collecting this revenue beginning in January 2017. So if you recall from our last conversation, how this language has to be phrased is a little interesting. The legislation specifically dictates that it must be put where the voters need to vote no to continue to collect the sales tax, and that is somewhat confusing. So I have included the proposed language for the question that MML has provided. And so in this instance, shall the city of Raymore discontinue applying and collecting the local sales tax on the titling of motor vehicles, trailers, boats, and outboard motors that were purchased from a source other than a licensed Missouri dealer, et cetera? In order for the city to continue collecting the current tax, voters would need to vote no on this. And so let's take a look at what a yes or a no vote means. So a yes vote would mean that the local sales tax would only be collected on these items if they were purchased in-state, and it will no longer be collected on these items if they're purchased out of state. And as I said before, that would result in an estimated $75,000 reduction in annual revenue for the city beginning in January 2017. A no vote means that the existing tax and that revenue collection will continue. And so when you look at the impact on individual purchases, you can see, again, that if the tax is discontinued, which is a yes vote, the sales tax rate for the items purchased out of state, only those specific items that I mentioned before, would be 6.475%. And if they were purchased in-state, the same items would be 8.975%. And so that's only factoring out the 2.5% city sales tax. If those, if the sales tax is continued, so a no vote, then the tax rate on both in-state and out-of-state purchases would remain the same. So there are a few additional things to know about the impact to residents. Again, the tax we are talking about only applies to the purchase of motor vehicles, trailers, boats, or outboard motors from out of state. And similar purchases made in-state will still be subject to the local sales tax regardless of what happens with the vote on this question. The issue, and you saw it addressed a little bit in the ballot language, is that the existence of this tax creates a level playing field for Missouri dealerships. It means that the sales tax is the same regardless of where the item is purchased. If this tax is discontinued, then Raymore residents will pay less sales tax on these items if they're purchased out of state, which creates a competitive disadvantage for Missouri dealers. So, any questions on this so far before I start talking about the use tax component?
Why does a no vote have to mean yes?
That is a confusing component of it, but there are some cities who have started to explore if we can flip the question or not. One of the reasons that we will propose keeping it as a no vote is because, as I will talk about later, a number of other cities in the metro are taking this to the voters at the same time. And so it allows us to use common informational materials, and so be talking about a no vote that would make sense to everybody, not, you might be hearing on, you know, NBC or ABC News that all of these other cities are looking for a no vote, but Raymore is actually looking for a yes vote to do the same. So we've been trying to get some common language established, but the need for a no vote was originally dictated as part of the legislature.
Charlene, I'm glad you brought that. That was kind of the question I was gonna ask, too. I'm not quite clear, I mean, so basically, somebody in Jeff City decided to pull a no means yes, and that's, because to me, I see that as an informational disadvantage, that it's deceptive on the ballot. And, you know, we've had issues here in Raymore in previous votes where voters have been confused over the no means yes and things like that, which requires different language. So is that mandated language that we have to use?
So, so far, what we know and what we're hearing from other cities who have done this is that it is mandated language. We are doing some additional work to explore, and that's why I'm not asking for a decision on the actual ballot language tonight, because I do want to make sure that, one, we're running the same informational campaign as everyone else, so it's as clear as possible if it is a no vote. But we'd love to take the opportunity to rephrase that into a yes vote, if possible. So we're still researching that.
Okay. And the backside of this is, and going back to that work session that we had, I know one of the things that was mildly confusing was, people are still paying the same tax at the point of sale. It's whether we get the money or if we lose the money, it goes to the state. So the taxpayer is not paying less, the taxpayer's paying the same, we're just not receiving it.
No. So that's for use tax. So I'm not talking about use tax yet. I'm only talking about the out-of-state motor vehicle sales tax. I'll get to use tax in a minute.
Fair enough. Okay.
Yeah.
Is it legal to use, or to, if you go back one slide to where you had the, or two slides, sorry, would it be legal to underline the word "discontinue" on the ballot?
Yeah, I think we'll be looking at all options for that. And so I, yeah.
I mean, that's, when you, as, I'm looking at this as I'm setting up a test to have kids pass, not to trick them. You would underline the important word in the passage that, to make sure they understand how relevant that word is.
Right. No, I think that's a very good point. And the next step, if you all do decide to move forward with putting this on the ballot, is for us to get some finalized language and your options lined out for you and come back to you with that information. Okay, other questions about the out-of-state motor vehicle sales tax component of this?
This is one staff is recommending for the ballot in August, correct?
That is correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Not necessarily this language, but just moving forward with putting a question about the out-of-state motor vehicle tax on the ballot. We still need to finalize the ballot language for you.
In an effort to preserve tax we're already collecting so that we don't take a hit of estimated $75,000 per annual.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Correct.
Well, I'm concerned about it, having it done in the fall and all, because right now, in our April election, especially with very little competition going on there, we'll not have very many people vote, and those that do will probably want to vote no. But if we bait until it is August or November, then we're gonna bring, especially this year, they're gonna bring everybody out, and I think our chances of success are less. Now, maybe I'm wrong.
For clarification, right now, it's my understanding, in April, the county has two different tax questions. The school district has a, I don't want to, I guess I won't comment on the amount, but it's significantly larger than ours. We have our two questions, and it's my understanding there may be even a library. I mean, we're gonna have more money and tax questions than people to vote for. And so I would be cautious to want to throw additional language on there. There's voter fatigue at that point.
Well, if they're voting no, they'll vote no, and no is what we want them to vote.
I guess my concern is, and that's why I asked if this is the official language that's, we're gonna be considering, is that when I read that up there, I see it, you know, and I don't have the answer to this, but I want to bring this out for discussion. When I read the second paragraph there, I think it's kind of leading, regardless of what my feeling is on it. Approval of this measure will result in a reduction of local revenue to provide vital services for Raymore. And it will place Raymore dealers and motor vehicles, outboard motors, boats, and trailers at a competitive disadvantage to non-Missouri dealers for motor vehicles, outboards, motors, and trailers. It says what the advantage for approval is on our side. It does not say the other, the other side. So in a way, I'm concerned that this is somewhat leading on a ballot issue, the language itself. I, you know, why would it say approval of this instead of disapproval of this would result in another effect?
I think, as Meredith said, what they're looking for tonight is, does, do we have consensus from the council to put this on? And then the next step for staff would be to prepare ballot language. It would go on in November. It's, I think, too late to put it on in April.
August.
I'm sorry, August. I'm sorry, apologize, August. But then we would have some work sessions where we would be able to review the ballot language. So, don't disagree with you, just I think that's the next step is staff's intent.
No, we don't disagree at all. It's just a point that I think needs to be made and brought out, you know. That, that, that's why I say is that I think it needs, it's important that it be open for discussion, you know, so.
Right, absolutely. And this is just the MML suggested language, just provided as a starting point, yeah. So we can definitely dive into what the ballot language looks like in depth for you all. Okay. So now, the use tax is the next component of this. As I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation, if the city has a use tax in place, then they do not have to take the out-of-state motor vehicle sales tax question to their voters, because they already have a mechanism to collect this revenue. Cities like Raymore, however, that don't have a use tax in place, must take the out-of-state motor vehicle sales tax question to voters to continue to collect that revenue. Some cities that don't have a use tax in place are using this opportunity to take a question to the voters about implementing a new use tax. This is not our recommendation, this is not staff's recommendation for the city of Raymore. As I have discussed and will discuss in a little bit more in depth in a moment, we are only recommending that the city move forward with the out-of-state vehicle sales tax question. I did provide more information to you all in your packet about what a use tax is and what purchases that it does apply for. And I will only say that the estimated annual use tax that Raymore would collect if this tax was implemented is $125,000. So I'm happy to talk more in depth about the use tax, but it's not something that we're recommending at this time. This would be a new tax for the city of Raymore. So again, two separate issues. The out-of-state motor vehicle sales tax ballot question allows us to continue to collect revenue we're already collecting. A use tax ballot question would be a new tax, and the $125,000 would be additional revenue that the city would create. So, I will just say that we have talked to another, a number of other cities around the metropolitan area. It does appear that a majority of them are placing only the out-of-state motor vehicle sales tax question on the ballot in August. And like I mentioned before, by going with the rest of the cities, this does allow us to do a coordinated informational campaign, especially if we are legally required to phrase the question, so we're looking for a no vote. We're able to get some momentum and some additional media coverage about that to help explain exactly the implications of voting yes or no on that issue. And so as a summary, this is our recommendation for you tonight. Do not move forward with placing the use tax on the ballot, but do put the out-of-state motor vehicle sales tax on the ballot in August. I've provided a proposed timeline for all of you. Of course, we would have to get the ballot language worked out, but we do have a little bit of wiggle room in that to meet the May 24 deadline. So all I'm looking for this evening is some direction on which ballot initiatives you'd like to move forward with, and if there is an agreement to move forward with the August election.
Okay, disregarding my little earlier confusion, I'm just gonna come right out and say what, how I'm gonna vote all the way through on this. Disregarding the idiocy of the language, and that'll get worked on and all that, you know, the out-of-state vehicle sales tax is something we are already collecting. That is not a new tax. If it goes down, it goes down. I'll let the voters stand by that, but they're already paying it, and they should get to decide. No way am I gonna back a new tax, especially the use tax. So, no new tax, so I'm not even willing to consider the second issue.
I would concur with your position as well. I think the use tax is, I think it's fraught with problems. I think it's gonna be like the initial days of income tax with the IRS. The first year, no one paid. That's how they had to make your employer collect the money, because no one was paying. You're gonna see the same thing here. You're gonna see some of the honest people being honest, and it's not being collected. So I support putting the out-of-state vehicle sales tax on the ballot in August, following staff's recommendation. I do have a question, though. I had heard, not confirmed, that the legislature, in their infinite wisdom, was trying to fix this with some current legislation. How would that affect us if there is that legislative change? Do we know?
I don't think we're sure yet how that will impact us, especially because we're up against a deadline. So we'll have to see how this shakes out, but our recommendation would be continue to move ahead, like we need to for this, and then if something changes at that level, we can make an adjustment.
Thank you.
I completely concur with both of you. Good points. The question that I have, can we go back a couple slides where we, right, go further, not back, come back to me, to the dates, to the dates, one more? Boom, back, right there. We got it. April 2016, Platt City, Parkville, North Kansas City. August 16, Blue Springs, Oak Grove, Crane Valley, Lee Summit, Raytown, Independence, Grandview. It seems to me that the synergies, the location, the locale, we'd be better off in the August because it seems like the ones north of the river are going for the April, for whatever reason. They probably don't have 17 different initiatives that are going on in April, and they probably have a full slate of candidates also. So, but it seems like this area, the locale, it should be August, in my opinion.
I also wanted to support the staff's recommendation about the out-of-state tax She would just say, um, "Go buy yourself something if you remember," and that would be a nightmare for us.
I do have one other thing, I, I would agree, concur with Kevin's comments. I, I think that with so many, um, cities putting this same issue, looking for the same response, I would assume we would get probably some favorable education from the media as well. Certainly with this many cities putting the same issue on the ballot, asking for the same result, they're going to give us free airtime explaining this. So Channel 9 News, for example, will cover this and say, you know, "This is on the ballot" because they do extensive election coverage and pre-election, uh, information.
The one thing that I wanna add to that is, around the, uh, break room coffee table and, and water cooler discussions, you know, that's, that's a big pool of people, you know, and many people that I work with live in all of those areas, you know, so we'll all be fighting the same battle and, and asking for the same thing, and all of those discussions from all of those different communities will be taking place, in, in, in my opinion. At least that's the way I see it happening at, at work for me every day. So I, I see a lot of more advantages there for the city of Raymore than, than April, you know?
Uh, I support staff and staff's recommendation. Uh, out-of-state vehicle tax, we're already collecting it, maintain that. Um, use, u- use tax, um, you know, like Jay said, it's impossible to manage anyway, but we don't need another tax, so I agree with staff.
Thank you.
No, we can't. Thank you, everybody. That was, uh, the last item for tonight's meeting. No. We're in adjournment, thank you.